It is 6:30. I am calling this board of selectmen meeting to order. Can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to our country, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we need to reorder a few items on the agenda. We are here to conduct town business this evening. So we are going to...I need a motion to move a public comment to number six. And we are going to move the minutes up to three, appointments up to four, and new business up to five.
So move.
Have a motion to any discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, so the first order of business is approval of the July 16th, 2018 minutes. Please have a motion to approve the minutes. I'll make that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay, we have an appointment to make. Rachel Francisco has applied. Maureen Terry, as you know, has retired in the land use department. We're hiring Rachel part-time to work in land use. We interviewed five individuals for this position. We had quite a few applications for this. Rachel is a resident of East Haddam. She has experience. There was a committee that was put together to interview her, and she was the recommendation of the committee. So she is looking to start August 13th. So I need to have her approve so that she can give notice to her current employer so that she begins to start working for the town on August 13th. So I have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Any other discussion?
Yes, does she...there's not a lot of information on this, if you call this a resume. Does she know Basic Word, Excel, all those things?
Yes. Any other questions? All right. So all those in favor appointing Rachel Francisco to become our new land use administrative coordinator, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Obey.
All right. Last piece of business is it's time again to award the lawn care bid. IPM, who has been doing the work for us, has a...I know they're here. They do a great job. A two-year contract that's in front of you. It's $10,500 per year. The dates of what they're going to do for lawn care, cutting and debris removal are there on the backside. There is a price to cut the field behind the fire station. They will do that two to three times a year. There is a typo on the quantity of one. So I have a motion to approve IPM to continue their work with the town of Haddam and renew their two-year contract, which I believe was up July 1st.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion?
Yes, was this put out to bid?
Of course it was.
Do you have the other bids and the other companies that we could look at?
There were no other bids.
There were no other bids. Where was this put out to bid?
It was on the Haddam...yes, DA's website and the Haddam newspaper.
So you didn't put this out broad or like the Middletown Press outside?
The DA's website. So it goes out to all.
Where we put all our bids.
But nothing in the newspaper, though, for something like this? Just in the local paper?
Thank you. That is the paper of record. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Post.
Aye.
All right. That brings us to public comments. So I'm going to ask those of you that would like to make public comment to please keep that to three minutes per comment. I will ask you to please form a line in the middle here. There is a line that is automatically here for the garage, so if you could stand around that area, I would greatly appreciate it. I'm going to ask that your comments be kept to three minutes. And I would also ask if there are any Haddam residents to please allow those individuals to also feel free to speak first. And when you speak, if you can please state your name and where you're from so we can keep record of it, I would greatly appreciate it. We are going to continue with Robert's Rules of Order. You are allowed to address me. I will address you. You are not allowed to address each other, okay? So that's our normal procedure for meetings. So if somebody does have something to say, I'm going to ask you to please get in line and say that during public comment. All right, so we will begin. Sir, your name?
My name is Darrell Wardle. I'm a Zellar vote.
All right. I need everybody to try to please be quiet so you can hear. We're going to conduct this meeting as a normal meeting, okay?
Michaeline, what you did, kneeling to the flag is disrespectful to the many women protected and serve this country. That's what the flag is for. And what you did is very shameful. And you worked here to get paid from the citizens of this town. You didn't do that in the world. It's disrespectful. Common sense. You wouldn't like to fight any and walk up and down the street with Trump signs and whatever. I mean, you can't do nothing. But here, in your work, you get paid. I'm paid. I'm your boss. You just don't do that. And you say you did it because of Trump and the Russia thing, really? When you were first elected, you took the flag and turned it in the dark. Trump wasn't around. I was going to buy your flag and give you one, but you just went and tore it away. Not what you do. In life, you got to learn respect and common sense. I think you went to college. You need to get a great month because you don't learn that. Maybe they should have that course in high school. So this way, if you can't get it in high school, save your month. Don't be...they ain't going. Those are the first two things you need to learn in life. Respect and common sense. And you lack.
We're good at three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Pablo Ferroyo. I live at 131 Wiggel Road in Haddam, Connecticut. I'm here not to address fools and charlatans, but I'm here to address the revenue of the town, okay? That said, I'll preface my comment by saying I wholeheartedly respect your right to protest, to take a knee, to lay down, to burn the flag, to do whatever it is that you show plea, okay? But if that's what you would like to do, do that on your own time. Kneel at your son or daughter's little league game. When you become an elected official, you become a representative of all of Haddam and all of the constituencies. There's a reason why the lady that represents justice has scales in one hand and sword in the other in a blind vote. She does not look to see who she's going to stand just for and who not. But unfortunately, one of us elected person decided to pull down the blind vote and start peaking, okay? That said, you ran as a Democrat. But once you became elected, unfortunately, you have to represent all of your constituencies. Last week and this week, you've told at least half the town, "I don't care whether I offend you, and I am going to act on my whim." You took it out. You took it out. I am not here to disrespect you as you've done to my flag, my country, and yes, I do say mine, okay? I am a combat veteran. In one day in 1983, out of my platoon of 24 Marines, I lost 18 in a suicide bombing. What you did was urinate on all their graves.
I'm in Hagan. I got a lead.
You can lead. Yes, Bob.
Don't get ready to clap because you're not going to. I also have a combat veteran in Vietnam. I fought as a combat veteran in World War II, earning the Purple Heart and the Brown Star with V device in Bat's Dog. No one in this room has earned the right to lecture me on what it means to be a patriot or a good American. Not one of you. 1968, I went to Vietnam at 20 years old, willing to give my life for my country. No funds, no soup, it wasn't back. Any veteran combat knows how bad it was. I died in Vietnam. I died in Vietnam. You know who killed me? Wasn't the PC, wasn't the NBA, it was our government. I am 100% disabled due to age and origin. I died there. I have 11 grandchildren, nine I will never see graduate, and I'll be dead by then. Bear with me a second.
Somebody have any water?
Look, I have, I feel every right to be pissed at my country because they killed me, but I'm not. I say the national anthem of pride, but with anger and with sorrow. Anger because my country killed me, sorrow because of what we've become. I took an oath to defend the Constitution. The Constitution starts with the First Amendment. She has that right. I'm not agreeing with her, and I think the reason she does it is stupid. I don't care. I did not go to Vietnam. He did not go to Iraq, I'm assuming. To pick and choose who gets to be better Americans? Screw you. None of you earned that right. And I ain't meeting you full politicians saying, "I'm a better American. I'm a better American." No goddamn way. And I apologize if I might. Totally inappropriate. But you people make me mad. I fought to defend your rights, and you want to take it from her? When she became a politician, she didn't become an un民dissident. Always doing that in our time. You know what? You want to be upset about something? Be obsessed with the words homeless veteran, ever go together. You want to be upset, write on Facebook, "What two veterans a day that commit suicide?" You make me sick.
Unless you need to leave, I would prefer you stand there so we can hear you. Thank you.
My name is John Barry. I'm going to read a letter that I sent to a selectman's slag. I am appalled by you taking a knee at the Pledge of Allegiance at the selectmen's meeting. My nearly 97-year-old father-in-law is very alert and mobile and agile. He fought in the Battle of the Bulge in World War II. He would be very disturbed by a lack of love and respect for America as exhibited by your actions. Elections have consequences. President Donald Trump won. Get over it. On two occasions, I didn't vote for President Obama, but I think salt can burn an American flag. I accepted the legal outcome of an election. If you feel your hatred for President Trump precludes you from properly representing the citizens of Haddam, then you should immediately resign.
Arthur, yeah, this is a workout. I heard her current, she said she was nervous and powerful.
I'm sorry, sir.
I'm nervous, but I don't feel powerful.
Can you just give us your name?
Arthur Abbott, Campbellwood Hill wrote, "Dereliction of duty is deliberate or accidental failure to do what you should do is part of your job. Protesting the president is not part of the selectman's job description. That or anything the townspeople have asked you to do." Without airing any dirty laundry or getting too specific, I found out in 2012 just how irrational and unscrupulous some of Melissa's decisions could be. I was at the time a staunch supporter and very active member of her Senate campaign team. Several decisions by her and her campaign manager turned my stomach, which forced me to turn my back on both Slog and Schweng. Now, freedom of speech and freedom of the press is something most of people should know as well of any of us in this room, disrespecting that flag as editors and authors and layout people they are. So seeing that the town has to take slap in the face and that flag protects her from being slapped back, I am going to take a knee on the Haddam bulletin. And by taking a knee on the Haddam bulletin, I do not mean voidifying anybody that advertises here, not using them for goods and services at my home, which I do several of them. But there are all their phone numbers in here, and I urge some of you people to do what I'm doing. I'm calling these people and letting them know how I feel and how these folks feel about the flag. I spoke to a gentleman yesterday who advertises in here. He didn't know who Ed Schweng was or that Melissa even worked for the bulletin. After a little bit of conversation, he told me he was very enlightened. God bless America.
Kristy Amenta, Beaver River Road, Haddam. And everyone before me has said it more eloquently than I could. And I did not know you were part of the Haddam bulletin, which goes to show why your words were given so much time to express. I have to let you know, on behalf of me, and I probably represent millions that you offended me, and just like everyone said before me, so we're all going to start to repeat ourselves, there are many administrations I didn't agree with. So your sorrow for Trump has to be on your own time, Melissa. I have had much sorrow for previous administrations, and I didn't kneel on behalf of the flag, which you say was written by a foreign capitalist. So foreigner, there goes your immigration you're all about, probably illegal immigration. And capitalism is what this country pays the taxes to afford entitlements for the people that you're probably a staunch supporter of. So I say, please, really, I'm talking to you woman to woman. You offended me to the core that I'm here tonight. I never offended you during any administration that you did support. Please. He's our president. As someone said, "Get over it," that wouldn't be my words, but please, get on board or do your thing on your own time to object to anything. It's so offensive. And I'm only one of millions that could, they have seen what you did, which now is on national television, or read your words, would have been very offended. And I appreciate it, because looking at me in the eye, woman to woman, I just have to let you know how I feel. Thank you.
If you can stand right there, that would be great. And you can face us or...
No, I don't want to face her.
Okay, that's fine.
I'd like to do my best. I'm actually here from North Grandford, Connecticut.
Can I have your name?
Sure. Clifford Potter. And I live in North Grandford, Connecticut. And I drove all the way here because she is offended to the point where I don't want to look at it. She's stealing from you guys because you are her bosses. She's stealing time. If her husband died, would I go in front of his parade and break dance? I don't think so. That wouldn't be appropriate. What she's doing is inappropriate. She's stealing money from the town because she's self-identifying herself on Town Clark, on the people's tax dollars. And it's a shame because you have a nice town. I own your town a lot, and I love this town. And we go to visit friends and relatives. But I'm telling you, she's put a black eye on you. She's stealing your money by acting inappropriately and unprofessionally on your dying. There must be some kind of regulation where you could take appropriate action. You want decent stuff. I'll be here every town council meeting until she's not here anymore. I'll come from North Grandford. This bothers me that much. I love the country. When you won't respect the flag, when you won't respect the pledge, and you got a problem with Trump, you've got the problem. But you're inheriting her problems because she's put a black eye in this town. She's insulting the intelligence of her constituents. She is supposed to represent the majority of her constituents. I don't think the majority of her constituents can feel that love if she's supposed to have it as a second selectman or third, whatever she is. But she's on the clock. She's stealing money and insulting our great country. And I'm sick of it.
Thank you. Sorry. Just let us, we're just trying to be fair with the time, so.
Hi, my name is Rick Hornung. I live at 63 Weiss Road in Haddam. Ms. Slog, I've never met you. I am very proud to say I voted for you every time you were on the ballot. I don't have any desire to talk with you or anything like that because I totally agree with your stamp. I want you to know that there are people in town who completely respect your right and are very happy that you take this right. There are people who value this right. Whether we agree with you or not, and I happen to agree with you, we are glad that you represent us. We are very, very glad that you take this moment, this particular moment, to express a view that is unpopular. Some of us feel that leadership sometimes requires that, and we are proud of that. And I want you to know that there are some of us in town who feel that way. Also, I find it ironic that on the night that this happens, the old business has to deal with the closing of a school. Some of us hope, regardless of how we feel on this issue, that you as selectmen, as three, figure out a way how to work together. Because closing a school is a very serious issue, a local issue. That will have much more effect on the generations to come than whether or not we relitigate the First Amendment, whether we revisit who fought when and where. It's not for us to go back and relitigate that. We have a big, big decision about that school. I strongly urge all of you, all three of you, to resist the temptation to look at it as a real estate deal or as a commercial opportunity. This is a public asset. The last time I spoke in front of the selectmen was when we decided as a town to build this firehouse, when we made the decision to invest in public assets that can benefit all of us. So I encourage selectmen to do that. I welcome the opportunity to address you. Thank you very much, and I really respect you. Thank you very much.
I thought you'd feel better in your own space, so you can come as closer. That is fine. I should have your own space.
I'm Kate Westling. I live at 28 Dumberhill Road in Higginham. I'm here to say I respect Melissa's right to peacefully protest something that she found was not consistent patriotic behavior. I think that her right to peacefully express that difference of opinion should not be met with crude harassment. And I respect the right of anybody in the room to do the same, to express exactly what you feel, what's deep in your heart, clear, share it with everyone, but share it respectfully, share it without harassment. And you know, Melissa and Larry and Liz, you're in board of three select people because the people with town have some variety amongst us. You're seeing it. And I'm glad somebody who's representing that spectrum of opinion and... Thank you, Melissa, but it is your right for peaceful expression of concern about patriotic behavior. Thank you.
I have your name. I am Ryder Page. I am 13 years old. I live in 19 Dumberhill Road, Higginham, Connecticut. That house is called Chickens. I'm here to say that I don't agree with the way this protest is gone. I...
You're okay. You take your time. There's not a lot of 13-year-olds that are brave enough to make public comments. So you take a deep breath and you say what you want to say.
Tell them what you believe in.
I believe that I'm the future of this town. I don't want to be represented by someone who will take a knee during our Pledge of Allegiance. I plan my future to serve in the Navy, to protect our flag and our country. I do not like the way this is gone.
Hi, Sean Moriarty. Little Contra, I think. I'm a veteran and police officer. I'm a veteran and a police officer, and I do support the Constitution and the First Amendment. Whether or not I think it's right or wrong, what Melissa did, really, is my opinion, my opinion only. But I respect her right to vote. That's not the good way I'm on LPR. I want to ask you guys, because this has been going on in another board for over a year. Two Republican members of the Board of Education have taken a knee for over a year, and the Republican Party has known about it. But it wasn't until Democrat does it at another meeting that everybody loses their mind, except for Chip Frey. I will say, Chip, I admire you for your consistency. You spoke up on that other thing. I admire that you said that. I wish it was consistency among your party to be so offended when it's been happening for over a year. And all of a sudden, someone you don't like and don't want to work with doesn't? I think that's a problem. That's all I can say.
Maria, I don't know what gives you the right to think... I don't know what gives you the right to think this is a Republican or Democrat issue.
It's my First Amendment.
It is, but it is a right of any party. This is not about party. This is about, and that is the only comment I have to say to you. Unfortunately, it is my opinion, but unfortunately, you continue to twist and turn and try to make things be about parties. And this is about Haddam. Thank you.
And I honestly didn't know.
My name is Tom Levine. Too many old names. You don't know those people, somebody I recognize. But this whole thing, this town is trying to get their economy going and thinking about maybe tourism with groups that kind of trails, the disc, bikes. You can do seven forever, museum, all this kind of stuff, they're building the town. How are you looking financially? With stuff going like this, anywhere you go, you scratch your nose and somebody's going to have a problem. And then if it's sensational, you're going on computers, you can tell the whole school, don't even know yourself. I prefer to talk with people back and forth, run from them, but that's a little bit easier. Making that from 63. And we grew up in town, and my sisters and I moved in in 63. I wanted to repaint the town or have to give it a little redo and school. Only school we had at the time. But when you do these kind of things and you're politicians, people think you're the one who charges, and this whole thing gets blown up. Next thing, you have an computer and you have TV here watching it. It makes the pound look really bad. I agree with your right for free speech, but not when you remember that possible voters and the now. You make it look bad. You make it look bad.
One more second. Hold on, one second. We can't hear you. Okay, you can state your name and then you can start.
My name is Richard Chander. I'm a proud patriot, but I'm here to speak on behalf of those who cannot speak any longer. I was in Washington DC last week. 100 young men from across this country that were high school students and were selected to go to Voice Nation and American Ditch in Dover for a week time. During that visitation, we went to Arlington Cemetery. I questioned the individual that we're discussing tonight. As that wreath was laid at the tomb of the unknown soldier, I was wondering what her reaction would be. Is that the time to protest? I don't think so. We stood to watch the K-Sons go by, and the young men, 100 of them, stood in complete respect for those that were going to the final resting place. I speak for other people. I speak for the thousands that never came home. Their voices were silent, their footsteps are no longer the same, but we have to speak for them. I wonder what their thoughts would be if they sat in this room tonight. I think I have a pretty good idea. They went, they served, the exact right that that young lady has, the same right that we all have. Those in Arlington defended liberty, they defended democracy, they defended her right. But what were you thinking when you kneeled down to the sacred Pledge of Allegiance, to the sacred flag, that what those people died for gives you the right to do that and disrespect them? I think it was crazy.
us, to respect that flag. When I got out of high school, I went to service. Again, respect that flag. When I came home, a lot of people were wearing their flag, and that's their right. There are 12 hundred, yeah, 1,246 graves up in that cemetery in Bow Lane and Milltown right now that have fought for us and got our freedom. But you don't turn your back on the flag. I spent six years in the Navy, on aircraft carriers, and believe me, it was a heck of a time on there. We had good food, good food and everything else, but we still got up in the morning and respected that flag. And as it says on my shirt, if you don't like the flag, I'll help you pack your bags and get the heck out of here. And you kneel and turn your back on that flag, you turned it on half of this town and all the veterans in the state of Connecticut and all the veterans around the world. If I had my way, I'd get a partitioned sign and sealed and delivered to have you replaced or required to get out of office because of that attitude. What you do on your time in your home, you can do it, but when you're in the office, you respect that flag and you don't turn your back.
The Constitution is sacred and well.
John Simpkins, I'm right at the room here. I'd like to address this man. I am an Army veteran. I have served as an elected official in this town as chairman of the Department for some years ago. And I have a question for Ms. Slapp, selectman Slapp. Did you kneel when President Obama sent that plane loaded cash to the Iranians saying "death to America"?
No, I did not, sir.
Enough said.
I've had enough of this because if you are going to ram this woman, you must ram the two Republicans who serve on the Board of Education.
I've been a resident in town for 28 years. I own a home here. I own a business here. I own business property here. I put two children through RSD 17. I'm a commissioner on Haddon's Economic Development Committee. I've lost many of my friends, members of my family have served in the military in our country. My brothers are Marines. We've employed people, men and women who have served in the military. I've seen one of them suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder, still suffering. They've made the ultimate sacrifice for this country. To me, that's what our flag is about. You're pledging allegiance to the flag, you're pledging allegiance to the United States of America. And I understand you have your First Amendment right, and I respect that. But I would ask anybody, whether they're Republicans, Democrats, unaffiliated, independents, on board of any, anywhere, if you want to protest something peacefully, then protest it some other time and in some other way. Do not disrespect the flag of the United States of America. This action by selectman Schlapp has caused a black eye for this town. There's lots of houses on the market right now in town. There's lots that are for sale. There are businesses in town. There's empty storefronts. We're all trying to do our best to make Haddon vibrant and viable then. We're trying to bring tourism. We can't do this. This act has stained all of that. It has been a detriment to this town. And it's for all of these reasons that I respectfully ask for you to resign. My final comment, Melissa, if you truly, truly care for the town of Haddon, please resign.
I was up here once before, but I don't want to be somebody that yells from the back. And I'm just, I'm not here to badger you. I'm here noticing that we have state troopers all around, and I don't notice one of them clapping or cheering, booing, hissing, applauding. They're just doing their job. That's being impressional. I don't know whose party affiliation, I don't know whose party affiliation. They're here to do a job. That's, I think, first and foremost, what the citizens of this town would just ask you to do. And that would have avoided all of this. If you could just address the issues of the town, which you've brought up here, which you have in front of you, without party affiliation, without stomping on my beliefs, who I'm supporting, it shouldn't matter who I'm supporting, and it shouldn't matter who you're supporting. And I believe in your rights, but when you go around offending people, and I didn't offend you during other administrations, and I already said that, I'm not going to repeat all that I said, but could we not help noticing that I didn't see one state trooper applauding, taking a knee, hissing, howling, or even, you know, hoo-hoo-hooray or anything like that, just doing their job? That's a professional. That's what I'd like to hear.
I live here in Haddon. I believe in the First Amendment at all times, not just part of the time. It is not about what you do, it is about, not about when you do it, it is about the fact that the Constitution and the First Amendment allows you, right, to have political speech anywhere, at any time. And it is, everyone, the veterans in this room's solemn honor to have, at one point or another, defended her right, defended Melissa's right, to have that political speech. That is what this is. This is political speech. None of you, nor I, nor you, who are selling Don't Schlapp the Flag t-shirts in your business.
Wait, whoa, whoa. You know that for a fact? Don't come up here. I have never, I don't sell those. I don't even have them in here.
Excuse me, could he speak?
I'm, oh. Yeah, don't even go there.
The chairman, please.
Hey, this is about the First Amendment for me now.
You're a liar.
I'm going to lie if I have anything to say.
You're a liar.
Hey.
Order, please. Excuse me.
I just agree with him, but let him speak. That's the point, okay? We have the exact amount, we don't have to agree to enable her to speak and to defend her right to do it. Whether I agree or not, it doesn't matter. She has the right to say it, she has the right, especially as a political official, to convey a political message. It doesn't matter what any of you think. I don't, I can't hear you. Let me have my time. The fact that all of you are here means you care. I think that's awesome. This is important. The fact that all of you care.
Excuse me, he still has a minute.
The fact that all of you are here means you care. That's awesome, that's amazing. How about we put all that into making this town a better place for everybody, not Republicans or Democrats, not for small businesses, but for everybody else? I can't hear you, and it doesn't matter because I'm still the one up here. If you want to come speak, wave your line and do it yourself. End of the day, we all have a right, we all have the opportunity to pay whatever speech we want. For someone to say, resign, for someone to threaten, for someone to do any of those things, your point is exactly right. She has the right, I have the right.
The best, let her talk.
Everybody has the right to speak. Everybody should be defending their right to speak. That is the only thing that matters here, and that's what all of you should be standing behind. Not picking and choosing when and where, but the fact that you all have the right to speak. That should matter more than anything else, more than partisan politics, more than anything else for this town.
She has the right to speak, her right.
Wait, wait, wait. You guys can't talk to each other.
It's not a private vote. Because of that, I'm being honest.
Time is up.
All right.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andy Monson. I live up in Lake. I used to be a selectman in this town for a few months. I'm not going to take up a lot of your time. I spoke on the call, I spoke before, and also I wasn't going to speak, and I didn't intend to. I'm just going to say this, having been a selectman in Melissa's chair, there's time and place for everything. I disagree with her point. However, I agree completely with her right to do it, but not on the selectman's time. That's disrespectful.
You already spoke.
Yes. So, excuse me.
I thought it was three minutes for residence.
Oh, excuse me.
Three minutes for residence.
I would like to address the lie that Paul White made, that our business fireworks hard in Harlem is selling t-shirts, Don't Schlapp the Flag. That's incorrect. However, if anybody would like to come and purchase a flag that the shops in Tylerville and many other residents and other businesses in Higginham have bought to sell or to display for $2, all of that money is going to the veterans in Haddon. We are not selling Don't Schlapp the Flag t-shirts. Here in Washington, this is Haddon, Connecticut. I own a business, a property in Haddon. I have to say that I agree with the First Amendment. We all have the right to speak, absolutely. But back in the day, when I grew up, there was also respect, respect for the flag, respect for our country. It's not like it is now. It's all about me. I have the right to do whatever I want, whenever I want. That means that you are disrespecting other people's opinions, and that is what I am sick of.
My name is Simpkins Morrell, Higginham, Connecticut. I'm a veteran in this place. My father served in the Atlantic for three years, World War II. A lot of his friends were killed. My daughter was in Vietnam. My father and mother also taught me about the Constitution, your rights, and everybody's rights. Everybody is, right, has the right to express how they feel. And I kind of get angry with it when people don't understand the First Amendment rights. You have no clue. I don't, if these people are getting off the track, I wonder if our man atop the hill up there, Mr. Trump, no opinion about this. It's crippling now. So anyways, you all think about that a bit. And my mother and father, and my brother, who has a missing leg now, Vietnam veteran, I go down to Westbrook, my father's cemetery, and I always make sure his flag's there because he's got, he had a military funeral as well. So, nobody who's a veteran in this place should tell anybody what to do. Because if my father were alive right now, he'd be saying exactly what he taught me. And if anybody who's ever read the book written by General Schwarzkopf, autobiography, you ought to really think about this, and veterans, and everybody else. General Schwarzkopf said, "I will never ever desecrate the flag. I would never burn him. I wouldn't do it. But I will fight to the death to defend anybody who do whatever they want."
I had some time to think, and this woman is offended by actions of other political figures. But in the same thing, when she kneels, she's offending me, and that doesn't bother her. So the fact that she's bothered by some action down the road to places that have nothing to do with town business, that she can't honor the flag, by her not honoring the flag which honors our country, which honors our great country, she offends me. She hurts my feelings. She makes me sad, but that doesn't bother her. So the very thing she's trying to get across, she's only creating a bigger mess. Yeah, she's doing it to all of us, everybody. Now, I'd like to make an offer, seeing how she can't have the energy or the time or the guts or the stamina to tie. If you permit me, I'll fill in that. if you permit me, I'll fill in that slot so that this flag is honored by at least four people at these meetings. Her not honoring it dummies down this town in a little bit. So I'd be willing to fill that slot as long as she figures she doesn't have to. And I am offended by your actions. Deeply offended, so much that I came to North Grand Forks because you offended me. So take that into consideration, because you're offended. You're self-righteous, but what you're doing is hurting the rest of us. Get the message.
Megan Peterson, Haddam. Just want to address the board. Free speech is not an absolute right, like all other rights contained in a shrine under the U.S. Constitution. The Supreme Court has actually upheld time, place, and manner restrictions on the First Amendment based upon safety concerns and other matters that Supreme Courts deem very important. We're talking safety, case of that nature. So just as the Second Amendment, of which I am a huge proponent, I can't just walk in here with M-16s, fully armed and guns. First Amendment is very similar in that regard. And First Amendment does not guarantee a right to be hurt. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
There is one last question. Very much people say, "I believe in the First Amendment, but..." There is no sentence you can possibly say this that goes, "I believe in the First Amendment, but..."
Hi. Can you have your name?
Sal.
Thank you, Sal.
I would just like to say that one of the things that I really liked about what Melissa did as an elected official was the reason why she felt that she needed to do that at that time.
Loudly, please.
This was, this was in response to Mr. Trump's performance in Helsinki, where he dissed the entire intelligence community of this country aside with Mr. Putin. I was, I was beside myself. I couldn't believe that he was doing this on a world stage. And the issue of these immigration children being ripped from their parents is just outrageous, it's sadistic. Anyone who has a child should know.
Let him speak, please.
And that this, this is why I was glad that she took the stance that she did. And I applaud her, still.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, alright.
My name is Chick Gray. I live at crap out of the corners in Haddam. I'm not going to go through a big history of my family, but I can tell you that one of my forefathers signed the Declaration of Independence. And I get my arrogance from him. He decided to put his address down. And there were consequences for that. Cost him his life. Can't go where to find him. We're taught respect. The president of Papa John's Pizza just used his First Amendment rights and lost his job and lost his company. We can do a lot of things. We've been taught over the years not to use racial slurs, homophobic slurs. Those are our constitutional rights, First Amendment. But they're offensive to people, and there are consequences. That plays very well. When you lack respect, there are consequences. All have the right to speak. And we shouldn't give anybody a hard time about speaking. And there's only one Republican that takes a knee at the board. The other is a Democrat from Kellymore.
Chair Challenger from Higginham. First thing I want to say is thank you for your service to our lives. Thank you for all the veterans in this room who have given their right and time to this country to protect our rights. I want to do it to my talking about Melissa. The first thing I want to say is the flag is a symbol of our Constitution. So when we talk about First Rights, we don't separate those. Those go together. They're together. The second thing that I'd like to say is that it's been years that you, Melissa, have chosen not to salute the flag at the meetings when you were first selectmen and in your position now. And nobody had ever given you difficulty about that and called you out on the carpet. The anger has come from the straw that has broken the camel's back. You have awoken a sleeping giant. And it's very sad that we're all here tonight under all this tension and stress, and we really need to get a lot of things done in our town and in our country. And we need to support one another, and we need to have respect for one another. And that's all I have to say.
Alright, is there anyone else before we move on to our next topic?
I would like to speak.
Or stand there, whatever you feel most comfortable. Please, Mike.
With liberty and justice for all is the last line of the Pledge of Allegiance. I strongly believe that we have neither. While the injustices stand in our country, I will kneel. I will kneel with both knees. Thank you. Until we find out how to deal with these injustices and the hate in our nation, we will not have liberty. What has developed in our town over the last five days is overwhelming. It's overwhelming hate. It's not right. And if people don't want to bring their business here or shop here, it's because of that hate and what they saw on Facebook and social media and Fox and Friends. You look good, though, Larry. It is not right for people to hate others. I have a right to free speech, to kneel. You have a right to dislike that. But please, don't put words in my brain or thoughts in my brain. My father was in the Air Force. Every single generation before me was in the military. I mean no disrespect to any veteran, and you all know that. Every single person in this room from Haddam, I have helped in some way. Even my detractors will admit that I have helped you in some way. I am a public servant. When Larry, Liz, and I leave this room, we do not stop being public servants. We continue to be public servants. Larry can come to the meetings with a sticker that says, "Stomp on my flag, I'll stomp on your ass." That is free speech. I don't have to stop my free speech when I walk in the door to a selectman meeting. We are always selectmen. Again, we have to worry about the injustices in this world. And once we have figured that out, we will then have liberty. I appreciate everybody coming out, because this is truly town government at its best. And we need to do this. We need to continue the conversation. Because if we don't continue the conversation, the hate will continue to fester. We need to rip the bandage off, and we need to deal with it. You can't wrap our sins in a flag and expect it to be okay. You can't do that. We can make our flag cakes for 4th of July with the little blueberries and the little strawberries and the whipped cream. That's fine. But what is behind that? I help my fellow citizens every day, every day. I don't hate my country, I love my country.
You just hate the flag. You got hatred of the flag.
Fine, I understand. I wish you all a good evening. Thank you very much. If anybody wants to continue the discussion, I will be happy to have that with you outside so as not to impede town business. Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
She didn't say where she's from.
Apparently Mars.
Okay, so we're going to continue. I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
I actually, Liz, I have one more point. For all those who think that I'm on the town's dime, I figured out this is eight cents. A 10-second kneel is eight cents, okay? I'd be happy to give the taxpayers back eight cents for every meeting. That's fine. But I do have to mention that Vice President Mike Pence just took a plane to protest at a football game at the cost of $250,000.
And what did Obama do, Iran?
I'm not, Obama did, Obama did, there is no...
We're talking about politics. You know what they say? They say, "If you don't respect, you won't get this win."
Thank you. No, it's fine. It's good. You're louder than me, so thank you. Alright. Alright, we're going to move on to town business and continue our discussion on the town purchasing Haddam Elementary. I do not have the information that I had hoped to have to talk about the cost of operating Haddam Elementary. There's been some discussion about the town purchasing Haddam Elementary and the residents talking about that and deciding upon further discussion about that. There was some comments that were made at the last meeting to rehab the building. And there's been a lot of input that when East Haddam just did their school, it cost about $15 million to do that. So I don't know if anyone has any comments that they would like to address the board as we're looking to discuss this. I did speak to the committee, and they are moving forward with closing the school. So the Board of Selectmen, the decision that is in front of the town from the letter that I received from the Chair of Education, Joanne Nestie, is I have until August 15th. If we need more time, I can do that, to let her know if the town has interest in purchasing the building. So that is the discussion. There are, I think it's important to say, I don't think some residents really understood. The laws that dictate regional school district 17 are Connecticut state statute laws. They have nothing to do with the town. They have to do with regional schools and how regional schools run. So I did have a few people say to me, "Can you do something to change those?" You can do something to change those, but that would have to be done by the legislation up in Hartford. So the town, it does not come under our purview. It does not come under our charter. It has to do with state statutes. So I just want that to be clear. That is a separate regulatory board that makes those decisions. And is that board's right, whether we like it or not, to make those decisions. So as far as the school staying open for educational purposes, they have told me that they are moving forward with their plan. As far as the town, we as the town have a right to discuss, and we can go to town meeting, and if those that feel strongly feel we should go to referendum, and we can do that when we have the November election, we can also do that if the town is interested in purchasing the building. I will say that the town hall is, we have plenty of room at the town hall. We're not out of space at the town hall. There might be other ideas. There might be things to look at with the town hall. Some of the concern has been another empty building. Well, the reason that we have empty buildings is because of our lack of infrastructure. I was with the state today. I was with Commissioner DECD this morning. He was here to look at, the deputy commissioner, to look at Scoville Ho and to look at the jail. And he recognizes the fact that we need infrastructure. So that is a concern. So we're working on those things. Again, I'm happy to take any comments of anyone who has a voice on how they feel we should move forward with looking at this building as far as the town. So I would welcome those comments right now if anyone has them.
Just for clarification, we had discussed at the last meeting to notice and hold an official town hearing, so everybody who wanted to discuss the school would do that? That suggestion is still there, and I think we should do that ASAP.
Anyone else from the public? Sorry. Can you, and it's not public? Actually, I did ask for public comments, so yes, you're fine. Can you just give us your name?
Sure. Jessica Eason, I live upon the lake.
Okay, thank you.
So the decision to close the school is final as far as the town?
It is the Board of Education's right to do that.
Okay, and then, I mean, they're not going back on that?
They're telling me that, what they told me is they're moving forward.
That's what I care about. I don't want to...
Yes.
My name is Ed Munster. And I've noticed a lot of people who have been concerned about the school are really, have lived in town a long time, have maybe gone to the school, have children gone to the school, and they look at it as an icon in this town. And would really like to see at least, you know, their concern appears at times to be about keeping the building intact. And what I would suggest is that either the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Education, if the word "selectmen" should end up buying the building, or the Board of Education should end up selling the building, put a codicil on the property that requires maintaining the facade of the building so that as people drive around this town in future years, they can point to the building and say, "That's the building that, you know, I went to school in," or whatever. And I think that would ease a lot of the concerns, some of the concerns that people have about this. I just feel that that might be something to consider. It would certainly ease people's, you know, "My building is still there. My school is still there." And rather than see some building get knocked down in some mall or something different be put up there that represents what they think is represented during that lifetime.
Thank you. If you don't mind.
Sure. I actually have one a lot more. So Jessica Eason, I live in Haddam. I actually just recently moved here. I actually chose a house in Haddam because of that school. I thought it was ideal. It was in the fall of last year. My daughter is two. And it was a major appeal of even moving to Haddam. So if the ship has sailed on it being the school, I will contact the Board of Education. They can do that. My preference would be that it is a community building of some kind. I moved here because they drew me in. I love the town center. I'd love for my daughter to use that building and the area around it. So that would be my preference if that is hard to be used as a community space, if not school.
Thank you. Yes.
Mary Alice Hughes, 238 Haddam, Woodus Road over at Haddam, Napper. I'm on the Department of Recreation Division. And I would really like this to go to a referendum. I would like, because I can see this being used as a community center, a senior center. They've got the Haddam Council right there. You've got a lot of opportunity for the community to enjoy, to enjoy this building of all different ages. So I'm hoping that we'll go to a referendum.
Thank you. Yes.
What do you have, Jeff, here on the other row? Haddam State Center School, do you have a price?
No.
And you spent a follow-up question. Do you know or not, have you had a frankhold on the building?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Alright, so we will set a time for a public hearing on this, and then we can decide from there where we're going to go. A motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Alright.
Everyone have a good night.